All right, good evening everybody. The order, regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council. We're going to start with the invocation led by Pastor Wes Harding. And then after that, we will have Councilmember Nicol lead us in the Pledge of Lead-ins. All please rise.
Mayor, thank you for allowing prayer to go through in this council and prayer to be here in the city. I know it matters a lot. And just seeing the life of the young women around us and to see the community that we are building, it's because of prayer. So let's pray. Father God, thank you for this community that we live in. Thank you for the life that you give us. Thank you for the season of the holidays to where we get to celebrate relationships, we get to celebrate family, and we get to celebrate the great gift that you've given us, the gift of choice. And Father, at this meeting today, I pray that your spirit would flow through here, that there'd be love and mutual respect. And Lord, thank you for the citizens of this community. Pray for protection over them during this holiday season as they travel. Pray protection over the fire and police as they serve us and the city workers and the city council members. And Father, just thank you for taking care of us. Thank you for loving us and caring for us so deeply that you give us a choice. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Write in, hand over your heart and join me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have several presentations, but first, I have to say, that was by far the best pledge of allegiance I've heard. All you ladies, young ladies, need to come here more often and support us. Thank you for being here. So the first presentation, I have the honor of talking about this group that's come to join us from the country south of us. And it's a pleasure to have the Honorable Mayor Saravaya and representatives from the city of El Segundo's sister city, Wyman's. And we've been hosting these folks since yesterday afternoon essentially. And I just want to talk about Sarah. Sarah was recently elected mayor. A little bit different in Mexico in terms of how they go about their political elections. And essentially, she ran against five candidates and she got 62% of the votes. So imagine that. And if you're following the news, you'll know that there's a new president, Obrador, in Mexico. And there's a lot of momentum in the country right now. And so I want to just talk about her background and thank you very much for traveling to join us today in our sister city. This has been going on. Mr. Funk, George, how many years has this relationship been?
At least thirty years.
At least?
Nineteen sixty-two.
Nineteen sixty-two. Thank you very much. That's a long time. What is that, thirty-eight plus? That's a long time. Fifty-six years. Anyway, I'd like to, I want to introduce, I'm going to read her bio and then I'll ask you to, if you guys want to, you know, grab the podium after I read the bio of mayor. Presidente. Sarah Vaydesins was born on May 30th, 1968. She is a Mexican politician and writer. At present, she is the mayor of Wyman's, elected for the period of September 2018 through September 2021. Previously, in 1997, she was also elected mayor of Wyman's with only 29 years of age. It's very impressive. She has a bachelor's degree in communications from, well, you know my Spanish is not very good, so forgive me. Lo siento. Universidad del Valle de México and a master's degree in special education from the Monterrey Tech. She also has a specialty in centered education by Universidad Pedo Gaca? No. Thank you, Alejandro Nacional. Vaydesins is an outstanding columnist, writer, mother of two teenagers, and also a teacher with more than 25 years' experience. I think it's 27, if I remember correctly. And on February 2018, she registers as a candidate for the Mexican political coalition encompassing three parties: the National Regeneration Movement, Morena, Labor Party, PT, and Social and Counterparty, PES, whose current leader swore in as the new president of Mexico this past Saturday, Mr. Andres Manuel Lopez Obrador. On July 1st, 2018, Saravaya won the elections with more than 60% of voters' preference, the most quantity of votes ever in the history of Wyman's, becoming the city mayor or presidente of Wyman's for the second time. So with her, we have, let's see, Alejandro Rodriguez Zapata, who is the technical secretary, like assistant city manager of sorts, right? And what's also, we learned today, what's also different about the way they govern is that the mayor, not only is a political figure, but they also administer, they're like a city manager. So it's a definitely full-time job. And we also learned that Wyman's has about 140,000 people. And we spent half the day brainstorming about ways that we could help each other and encourage reciprocity in business and cultural exchange affairs. So we're really excited about that. With Alejandro is Servando Rodriguez, who spent three summers here as a youth, right? Playing baseball and doing other things. Thank you for being here. With his beautiful wife, thank you for being here. And then we have Beatriz, right? And then Lucy, who is the private secretary to the mayor. And then I also want to give out a couple mentions. So Sandy Jacobs, who is the mayor here in, remind me on the years, twenty years ago, I think now. Twenty years ago.
Ninety-six.
Yeah, so she joined us. So she was instrumental in the program. Dr. Bill Watkins and his wife Carol were instrumental. They brought the band down to Wyman's for like three years running. There was a Wyman's princess and queen that, from El Segundo, that went down to Wyman's. There's been many things over the years that have transpired and we look forward to continuing the relationship. And this is a great first start to re-engaging. George Funk, president of Kiwanis, are you still president?
No.
Okay. You were president up until recently, right? Okay, thank you. George Funk was instrumental in bringing this group together again after many years of being dormant. So thank you for doing that. And did I leave anyone else, Greg, in terms of civic leadership in making this happen?
Our former fire chief.
Oh yeah, Kevin Smith. Where's Kevin? Hey, there you are, Kevin. You've been to Wyman's a couple times, right? Awesome. Thank you for being here, sir. And thank you to Kiwanis for helping lead the effort in that regard too. So we've had a great day. And Alejandro, do you want us to address the mic? We do have, we have a key that we want to give as well. So maybe what we do is, we'll come up, we'll give you, we'll present the key and then with the whole city council and then we'll ask for a few words and then we're going to go from there. Okay? Sound good? All right.
Fantastic. If we could have, just move down a little bit there. Couple of photos here. Come on, everybody. Everybody. This is nice. What a nice group. All right, here we go. One, two, and, one more? Oh, if I can have just a little bit. Ah, yeah, see, I want to see your cara. Okay, here, one, two, and, and, and one more. And please.
Is your wife from Wyman's? Can I get her picture?
Yes. I married her because of this program.
Seriously? Did you guys hear that?
Yeah.
Robert is married because of the wife of the Wyman's program.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. I love it. All right, here we go. One, two, and, one more, and one more. All right, I think we got it.
You guys can take it. This guy would be a asshole if he was there.
I would.
Buenas noches. Me siento profundamente emocionada de poder saludarles desde el City Hall de nuestra ciudad hermana del segundo California. Agradezco al mayor Drew Boyle y a todo su equipo de colaboradores por la finísima atención de esta distinción.
Good night. My name is Saravaya, mayor of the city of Wyman's Sonora, Mexico. I thank Mayor Drew Boyle, his staff, and elected officials for this fine distinction.
He sido invitada a esta sesión de cabildo para presentarme como la presidenta municipal de Wyman's en la máxima tribuna de esta ciudad. Es un honor para mí traer la representación de mi bello y heroico puerto de Wyman's con el fin de restablecer nuestras relaciones de hermandad.
It is a great honor for me to bring the representation of my beautiful and heroic port with the purpose of re-establishing our sisterhood.
Wyman's es una ciudad cargada de historia. Libro una batalla en contra de la invasión francesa, motivo por el cual somos un sitio heroico.
Wyman's is a city steeped in history. We waged the battle against the French invasion, which is why we are an heroic city.
En nuestro territorio habitan seis de los ocho pueblos indígenas originarios yaquis.
Six of the eight Yaqui indigenous communities are within our territory and jurisdiction.
Existen bellezas naturales como el cañón de las Barajitas, una reserva natural con tres ecosistemas diferentes y considerado un lugar sagrado y al que solo haya acceso por bote.
Natural wonders such as Barajitas Canyon and natural reserves with three ecosystems considered a sacred place to which there is only access by boat.
Tenemos nuestro emblemático cerro del Tetacahui y recientemente el atardecer más hermoso del mundo según la revista National Geographic.
Our emblematic Tetacahui mountain, the most notable peak in San Carlos, where we have the top ocean view and sunset according to the National Geographic book Secret Journeys of a Lifetime.
Además, un torneo de pesca anual y la granja de perlas, única en su tipo en América. Empresa surgida de un proyecto escolar con estudiantes de quienes me honro en decir que fueron mis alumnos. Las perlas tienen una gran gama de colores que van del gris al oro, bronce, verde olivo, negro, y rosa.
In addition, we annually host a fishing tournament, which is the oldest in Mexico. Pearls of the Sea of Cortez, unique in its kind and the only commercial production pearl farm in the American continent. A company that emerged from a school project with students of whom I am honored to say that they were mine students. The pearls have a range of colors ranging from gray to gold, bronze, olive green, black, and pink.
Somos un puerto con una gran diversidad de actividades como la agricultura. Nuestros campos producen trigo, soya, cartamom, maíz, algodón, sandía, y chile.
We are a port with a diversity of activities such as agriculture. Our fields produce wheat, soybean, safflower, corn, cotton, watermelon, and chile.
También hay ganado, pesca de camarón y sardina, pero la industria más importante está relacionada con el procesamiento de productos pesqueros como el enlatado y congelación, ya que nuestro puerto aporta el 40% de la producción nacional de sardina.
There's also livestock, shrimp, and sardine fishing, but the most important industry is related to the processing of fishery products such as canning and freezing since our port contributes 40% of the national production.
Tenemos maquiladoras que emplean alrededor de 12,000 personas, produciendo componentes mecanizados de precisión para motores aeroespaciales, componentes eléctricos y mecánicos para automóviles, dispositivos médicos, y moldes de inyección de plástico para una variedad de industrias.
We have maquiladoras that employ around 12,000 people producing precision machine components for aerospace engines, electrical and mechanical components for automobiles, medical devices, and plastic injection molds for a variety of industries.
La zona portuaria tiene una gran cantidad de manejo de cargas principalmente grafito, ya que nos encontramos en un punto privilegiado a solo cinco horas de la frontera con Estados Unidos y somos una puerta hacia el comercio con el mercado asiático.
The port area has a great load handling activity, mainly graphite, since we are in a privileged spot, only five hours from the border with the United States, and we are a gateway to trade with the Asian market.
El béisbol se jugó por primera vez en nuestro país precisamente en el puerto de Wyman's. Soy una gran impulsora del deporte, pero en especial del béisbol, porque mis hijos lo practican de manera continua desde sus, desde sus escasos cuatro y cinco años y porque soy fanática de los Dodgers, en donde estuvo la leyenda mexicana Fernando Valenzuela, nuestro famoso toro.
Baseball was played for the first time in our country precisely in the port of Wyman's. I am a great sports promoter, especially baseball, because my children practice it since they were four and five years old and because I'm a great L.A. Dodgers fan, where legendary Fernando "El Toro" Valenzuela played.
Todo lo anterior es parte de lo que es nuestro municipio, uno de los más grandes del estado de Sonora, que recientemente tuvo una elección histórica que trae una nueva era en la forma de gobernar con el licenciado Andres Manuel Lopez Obrador. En Wyman's ganamos con el 63% de la votación y ello nos da el sustento para decirles que la ciudadanía desea reanudar nuestra relación de hermandad.
All is just a part of what our municipality is, one of the largest in the state of Sonora, that recently held a historic election bringing the start of a new era with our president, Mr. Andres Manuel Lopez Obrador. In Wyman's, we won with the support of more than 60% of the voters, which instilled me to say that the citizens of Wyman's want to re-establish our sisterhoods.
Hace 20 años fui presidenta municipal y también en aquel entonces encontré las relaciones de hermandad frías y distanciadas. Hoy les digo firmemente que trabajaré fuertemente para reanudar nuestra relación de amistad, de colaboración, y de negocios.
Twenty years ago, I was also elected mayor of Wyman's and at that time, I found the relationship between our cities cold and distant. Today, I firmly tell you that I will work hard to strengthen our friendship, collaboration, and business relationships.
Deseamos verlos en nuestro próximo carnaval, una fiesta que data de 1888, el primer carnaval en territorio mexicano. No falten, los esperamos en esta fiesta de alegría, luz, y color para estrechar nuestros lazos de amistad.
We wish to see you at our next carnival, a festivity that dates from 1888, the first carnival in Mexican territory. Please don't miss it. We wait for you in this celebration of joy, light, and color.
Agradezco las atenciones que me han brindado y el permitirme estar en este recinto con la investidura de la representación popular de la heroica ciudad de Wyman's Sonora. Muchas gracias.
On behalf of the city of Wyman's and its citizens, we appreciate your attention. Allowing me to be and speak in this room has been a great honor and privilege. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bruce.
Gracias. Buenas noches.
That was incredible. Thank you very much, Mayor Saravaya. And we will, we definitely will continue the dialogue. I think we had a great start today. And I know we've got some action items already planned in terms of cultural and business exchange, so I'm really looking forward to that. It was a great meeting. And I also want to point out that a few people and staff made this possible, came together very quickly. Greg Carpenter, city manager, thank you very much. Newly promoted captain, Carlos Mendoza, I don't know if he's here, but he was certainly here earlier today. George Funk, who I already mentioned. Ken Berkman, director of Public Works, he's here somewhere, I'm sure. Barbara Voss, newly promoted deputy city manager in charge of economic development and communication, thank you. Sam Lee, director of planning and building safety, don't see Sam, but he was there today. David Serrano, our new director of human resources and chief Donovan in fire. Thank you all.
Mickey Misha.
Oh, Mickey Misha, thank you so much for coordinating everything and getting everything aligned. I know, I don't know if they're here, but thank you.
There's a guest for you.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Should we come up?
Go get the gifts, Drew? Come on.
Is this one of the sailfish?
The same fish. We have one of those, I think, in the office, they're sounding similar. Yeah.
Here we go. One more? And one more for me? Wonderful. Thank you so much.
This is amazing. We've got to put this up here.
Mayor Boyle, before you move on, would you care to share with the audience the special guests that we set up specifically for the mayor's visit today?
Oh, I meant to say that. So actually, I wish we could take credit for this, but this group was fortunate enough to get a private tour of the Lakers' new facility that they bought and developed here in El Segundo, next to campus El Segundo, which many of you spend a lot of time at. And our staff did a great job of setting up a meeting and they got to meet none other than Magic Johnson, which I haven't met and none, yeah, so that was pretty awesome, right? Yeah. So I don't know how we're going to beat that next time you come. I mean, but, LeBron, LeBron was shooting some hoops too, right? Yeah, it's all good, yeah. All right, thanks for reminding me about that. Great stuff. Thanks again, really appreciate it. Okay, Councilman Pimentel.
Next, we're going to move to the girls' softball teams here. We have four teams to recognize this evening. As a bit of a lead-in, I would say the history of softball in El Segundo has had periods where it was recreation, there are periods where it's been competitive, and there are periods in the not-too-distant past where it was largely dormant. But the winning culture that we've developed now, where you compete at the highest levels, is something that we thought fit to recognize among these teams. There is a bit of a truism that developing a winning culture will beat a winning strategy every time. And that's why building winning cultures is so hard to do. And it represents the efforts and patience of the managers, certainly the sacrifices and efforts of all of the parents who make this possible, and the kids who buy in and the ladies who play out there every day and embrace the teaching to go out and play both offensively and defensively, because everybody has a time on the bench and everybody has a time on the mound. But being able to embrace that day in and day out is what makes winning cultures emblematic and that's why you are succeeding every year. So with that, we're going to call up these teams in order. We'll go youngest to oldest, to the managers to recognize. And we'll start with the 8U Gold Team. That's Hank Crossit is the manager of that team. Coaches Deanna McLaughlin, Brad Swartzlander, and Rick Engelhardt. The 8U Team, I'll come right there, hold on one second. The 8U Team won two tournaments this summer and went one round deep in the state playoffs, which is something that if we'd said 20 years ago, this is something that was happening in El Segundo girls softball, I think people would have thrown things at you. So Hank, very well done.
Do you have a picture of the girls?
Are we going to picture with the young ladies or is that?
Bring the girls up?
Okay.
Wonderful. Are you two young ladies over there? Okay, guys. Here we go. All right. All right, here we go, guys. Nice big smiles. One second. I'm going to reactivate this. Here we go. And, one, two, and, one more. Beautiful. And one more. Wonderful. Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize 10U, the 10U Gold Team. Manager Eric Stevenson, coach TD Meyer, Matt McMillan, Jim Walker, and Rob Green. 10U Gold had the distinction of beating the three major champions along the way in their, in the Western Nationals, correct?
Correct.
Beat the district, state, and Western national champion in the tournament.
Wonderful. If I get one of the young ladies to fill in that area over there, maybe? All right. If I get this gentleman to go behind this young lady right there? All right. Okay. All right, guys. Over here. Couple of photos. One, two, and, and one more. Good luck. All right, thank you.
Next, we have the 10U Silver Team. 10U Silver Team that qualified for five separate tournaments. Jenny Connet is the manager. Coaches Joe Benjamin, John McCavity, and Gerardo Campos.
All right. Do you have your players here? All right, all right. How about, how about, okay, all right, that'll work. Good job. Good job, Drew.
Ten.
There we go. There we go, so we can see everybody.
Ten and nine, right?
Fantastic.
Nine and ten, hope so.
All right, here we go. Just up here, a couple of photos. One, two, and, one, two, and, and one more. Beautiful. Thank you.
Finally, we have 12U Gold, who's led by my softball nemesis, Jody Kleeger. Coaches Bruce Cochran, Dan McKenney, Chris King, and Steve Cleland. This team finished fourth in the district tournament and defeated the Western National second-place team.
Let's see now. All right, that's, oh man, okay. If we could, if we could just back up a little bit there? All right, so we can see everybody's hands from the face. Oh, good job, girls. I like that. I like that. That's a good, that's a good way to do it. Here we go. Couple photos. One, two, and, one, two, and, and one more. One, two, and, wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, of course. Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
To our friends in Wyman's, you thought we just had big crowds? No, it's just, just tonight only for you guys. All right, we're going to Alright, we're gonna actually... We're gonna, we're gonna skip item B with the new K-9 Officer. Put that to the end, right? Yeah, that's, yeah, okay. So we're gonna move on to item C, which is an introduction of the Fire Department's new employee, Liz Lydic. Is Liz Lydic Management Analyst and Vanessa Arias Administrative Specialist. So who's going to present? Chief Donovan's probably making his way up, okay.
Liz, over here real quick.
Thanks.
No, you're good, you're good. Sorry, can you stand right there? Thank you. Good evening. It is indeed my distinct honor and privilege to introduce two of our newest employees at the Fire Department. To my immediate left is Vanessa Arias. She is our new administrative specialist assigned to the Fire Administration Division. Vanessa comes to us from private industry where she was the office manager with Fix Auto, and she supervised a crew of seventeen at the height of her career there. In addition to her thirteen years of administrative experience, she has a liberal arts degree from Los Angeles Harbor College. Vanessa also has experience as a founding member of the Angel City Brigade. This is a nonprofit entity associated with the LA Galaxy Soccer Team. She served as a lead booster with the solid fan base in Section 121. If you would go to the StubHub Center, you would see Vanessa and her crowd standing on their feet, drumming. Mayor, you know this, right? You've seen that? Drumming, loudly cheering on. In fact, her fondest memory is cheering on the team, the LA Galaxy, to securing back-to-back MLS championships. She brings that same level of enthusiasm, the administrative skill sets, and the ability to integrate with the office. She's truly the first face you see in the Fire Department now as you enter the Headquarters Fire Station, and it's great to have her here. Vanessa enjoys traveling, more notably to watch her favorite soccer teams around the world. Her most recent trip, she was in Argentina, where she caught several soccer matches across the country. She's a new mom, and when not working and traveling, she says that she enjoys spending time with her son as well as taking naps whenever possible. This is Vanessa.
Welcome.
And then to Vanessa's left is Liz Lydic. You may recognize Liz. Liz comes to us from the city's Finance Department, so we were able to catch her and grab her over the Fire Department. In Finance, she assisted with thousands of businesses obtaining compliance and securing their certificates and paying annual business license taxes. She focused on providing exceptional customer service, communication, and education about the process and requirements. Liz prioritized making the business license process smooth and easy for all the new business owners. She's also, was also involved with coordinating the film activities and was fortunate to collaborate with many of the other departments within the city. Her attention to detail, ability to multitask, exceptional customer service, and her understanding of the business sector within El Segundo has made her a perfect candidate for the newly created Management Analyst in our Environmental Safety Division, known as COOPA. Liz has been a resident of El Segundo for the past six years and holds a BA in Theater Arts from San Francisco State University. She worked for several years in finance positions for the nonprofit sector, and she continues to stay involved in theater by serving as a board member on a national organization, judging theater competitions for high schools in the Los Angeles area, and is regularly contacted by community theaters around the state to provide resources and facility solutions to common issues and questions, or, and problems. Liz is thrilled to be part of the El Segundo Fire Department, as is her daughter Ramona, who is the preschooler at the Eagles Nest and looks forward to many visits to the fire station. So, this is Liz Lydic.
Welcome Liz, congrats on the move, anyway. Do they want to say a few words, or just...
Say a few words? On the spot?
Yeah, a little bit. Well hello, I am very excited to be here and be the, a new addition to the city of El Segundo, but even more excited to be part of the Fire Department. And I'm really enjoying my company from my new coworker Liz. She's pretty awesome. And also, obviously Chief Donovan and my manager Carolyn, so so far everyone's been very welcoming, and thank you.
Thank you, I love your pastime.
Oh, thanks.
Welcome, alright. And Liz, you want to say a few words?
Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight and to meet you all, and re-meet some of you guys. Thanks to Chief Donovan and of course to Victor Morales, my manager, and I look forward to this next step in my career, being part of the Fire Department, and hopefully many years as an employee with the city of El Segundo. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Thanks so much Chief, thank you Liz, thank you Vanessa. Okay, next up, we have a presentation by Public Works, also with the new employee. Or, I think this is a promotion as well, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Pleased to be before you tonight to introduce a new employee, although she's not really new. She's been working as a temp Management Analyst for over a year now. But, you know, I like to say, next to maybe the city manager's office, there's no more diverse workload that comes to a department than Public Works. And similarly, the only position that really has a more diverse workload than myself is the Management Analyst. In this case, the Senior Management Analyst, which I personally truly appreciate council support, where we upgraded that position from the Management Analyst to the Senior Management Analyst last fiscal year. You know, the position, responsible for key help with a forty million dollar budget preparation, truly expanded capital improvement program, all the contracts that run through, all our maintenance operations, contracts and POs all go through the Senior Management Analyst position. Complex programs, huge help with, for example, our solid waste program, getting that up to speed, and our trash hauler contract. It's responsible to be our liaison to the Environmental Committee and take a leadership role in partnership with Public Works and the City Council to make sure environmental programs are sustained and improved as we go along. And a key part of the senior position is representing the city and the department regionally. And for example, next week Jasmine's going up to Sacramento to CalRecycle to represent us at a, at a meeting that they're holding to discuss our programs. So it's a great pleasure, very competitive recruitment, open recruitment, that Jasmine Allen was selected to be Public Works Senior Management Analyst, and it's truly a pleasure having her onboard permanently now. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Thank you Ken, I am thrilled to be here. I am very fortunate to be working with such a fantastic team. Truly great people that I work with, I am, I am really lucky. Working with Public Works has been incredibly rewarding and gratifying. Public Works is what sustains the city. And to be part of it is, is an honor, and it's very humbling. And it's a lot of fun. I always say that Ken has the most fun job. And speaking of Ken, I am deeply honored to work for such an incredible leader, whose work ethic, passion, energy is so inspiring, and ultimately, he is my role model in so many ways. Thank you. Thank you Ken for... Helping me to succeed. And thank you council.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, next presentation, we have the RSVP Officer of the Year, and who's gonna be presenting on this? Chief?
I've got this one Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to explain this great program we've had here in the city for so long and this year's honoree. Our commendation reads like this. Whereas the goal of the El Segundo Police Department's Retired Senior Volunteer Program, RSVP, is to assist the police department in their efforts to better serve the citizens of the city of El Segundo. And whereas RSVP members are the eyes and the ears of the police department, and as representatives of the city and the police department must maintain an image at all times that parallels the professionalism of the El Segundo Police Department. And whereas Alan Gregg has been an El Segundo Police Department RSVP since July 20th, 2015, providing routine patrol but contributing additional hours working the downtown neighborhood watch, the Little League Parade, the Centennial Firework Celebration, Candy Cane Lane, the Homecoming Parade, the 10K Walk for Education, and performed a streetlight survey. Alan also removes graffiti, repairs crime prevention and station equipment at home during his off-hours, and assists the Crime Prevention Unit with additional duties. And whereas Alan Gregg has, always comes to work with a smile and an eagerness to help with our requests, and makes invaluable contributions to the RSVP program and to our community with enthusiasm and support. And whereas Alan Gregg has been selected by the city of El Segundo as the recipient of the El Segundo Police Department's RSVP of the Year Award in recognition of the hundred and eighty-seven-plus hours he has volunteered to the El Segundo Police Department's Retired Senior Volunteer Program. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of the city of El Segundo, California, on this fourth day of December 2018, hereby commend Alan Gregg for his invaluable contributions to the Retired Senior Volunteer Program and invite all citizens in recognizing Alan Gregg as the El Segundo Police Department's 2018 RSVP of the Year. Congratulations.
Yes, it was my... So many children, I forgot. It's very important to the program. Oh, I'm so sorry. Very good, okay, here we go guys. Oh, we can open it, sir. Excellent. Do you want to hold the other side? There we go, looking good, alright. One, two, and, one more, and one more. Does the rest of your crew want to come down? Fantastic, okay, do I see everybody? Alright. Can you move a little bit this way? Oh, I'm so sorry, please, you first, you first. Very good. Okay, and, over here folks, and one, two, and, couple more. Alright, oh, one more, in case we're late, alright. And the council. Perfect, very good. Alright. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Fantastic, very good. Maybe the gentleman can go in the back, and the ladies just have a little follow? Very good, very good, I think we can get everybody here, okay. Very good. Here we go, and one, two, and, couple more here. Alright, thanks guys, alright, thank you so much.
It's like a rite of passage or something.
Alright, thanks again, congrats to Alan Gregg. Next up, we have a proclamation that Councilman Nicol is going to read as the resident of Candy Cane Lane on the dais.
I am not a resident of Candy Cane Lane, I am an envious, I'm an envious nearby resident of Candy Cane Lane. Candy Cane Lane adjacent, there you go, close enough to have to recuse. To lead in on this, Candy Cane Lane, it is one of my favorite traditions here in El Segundo. And the proclamation is great, but it doesn't do quite justice the effort that is put in by the, the residents of the 1200 block of East Acacia. So, here we are. Proclamation, city of El Segundo, California. Whereas great and wonderful events are many times the inspiration of one person like Ken Bailey, whose simple idea that a decorated tree be placed at the end of the cul-de-sac on 1200 block of East Acacia in celebration of a neighborhood Christmas in 1949 is over sixty-nine years later an annual holiday tradition in El Segundo, worthy of national media coverage and known as Candy Cane Lane. And whereas Candy Cane Lane features Santa Claus arriving on top of a horn-blowing El Segundo fire engine to light the beautifully decorated homes on Candy Cane Lane as he makes his way into his sleigh in a Christmas village situated at the end of the cul-de-sac, from which he sends good cheer each year for eleven nights this year to thousands of boys and girls, residents and tourists, and homes, yards, and magnolia trees are brightly decorated. The El Segundo Community Band plays and property owners dress up their homes for all the oohs and ahs as the tradition of Candy Cane Lane. A few good merry men of Candy Cane Lane have given their merry ho-ho-hos year after year in the Santa suit donated by Chevron. A big thanks to spring cleaners for generously making sure Santa suit is sparkling for the season. The El Segundo Police Department RSVPs and El Segundo High School ASV volunteers make sure the crowds maneuver down the lane in a safe and orderly fashion. And whereas, least we forget, wherein, where here, sorry. Whereas, least we forget, we herein list the names of the folks that are synonymous with Candy Cane Lane, and please, I do apologize if I mispronounce one of these. Erez, Hoods, Hendricks, Perserilus, Ezden, Salaz, McEwans, Warwick's, Moors, Turnbull's, Ratty, DeLembrettes, Gideon and Stretch, McCullas, Mitchells, Gans, Hudspith's, Hearts, Ducacuses, Bernicants, Philipees, Strozer, and Zetto, Leaches, Kells, Wong's, Schlen, Schlenrings, Moyes, Stros, and Loeb Joyce? Now therefore, on this eighth day of December 2018, the mayor and members of City Council of the city of El Segundo, California, proclaim the 1200 block of East Acacia Avenue as Candy Cane Lane from December 8th, 2018 at 7:00 PM through December 23rd, 2018, and invite the young and the young at heart to experience the wonders of this El Segundo holiday tradition. And here, here accepting the proclamation for the 1200 block, you want to come up and we can take a little photo? You guys, all coming down?
Of course.
John and Allison Hart are here to accept this proclamation.
traditional grand finale, the Chevron fire truck, bringing Santa Claus through downtown El Segundo, in between the crowds will be treated to a few surprises. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 9, 2018, as the 55th Annual El Segundo Holiday Parade and invite the community to all the traditional El Segundo holiday events in which the Chamber of Commerce many more years of marching down the street. And we have Marsha Hansen, the CEO of the El Segundo Chamber, come up and accept this.
All right. Everybody's looking sharp. Here we go. One, two, and here we go. One more, and one more. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Boils, and the members of the City Council. On behalf of the El Segundo Chamber, we want to thank you for your support of the 55th Annual El Segundo Holiday Parade. Before I go further to talk about the parade, I want to say on behalf of the El Segundo Chamber, bienvenidos, El Segundo Guimas.
That's it.
De nada. I learned about Guimas when I first came to El Segundo in the 90s from Sandy Jacobs and Carl, Kevin Smith talked so fondly about Guimas. I will tell you, the Carnival Guimas, Carnival, is February 28 to March 5, 2019. I would tell you the exact date of the parade, but I got a C in Spanish, and the website was all in Spanish. So I can't tell you the parade, but Guimas, I know the folks here, Sandy and all, went down to Guimas every year for the Carnival, and I encourage everyone to head down to our sister city this year. We want to thank all of our generous sponsors and many volunteers who make the parade possible, including the City of El Segundo and your fabulous team. We love working with them. Chevron, and they will be on the parade route handing out those coveted magnets.
Chip clips.
Listen to the gasp. People are so excited about the magnets. Consolidated Disposal, please put your trash in the boxes. Coastal Ortho, Courtyard by Marriott Townhouse Place Hawthorne, and Mattel. And you won't want to miss a very special presentation at the main stage from Mattel's. It's going to be very special, so you'll want to be there for that, for the Mattel's Hot Wheels celebrating their 50th anniversary. Bama Dapp and Los Angeles World Airports. Now, word has it on the street that Santa's heading this way. LaWaa's giving him clearance to head into El Segundo to see all the good boys and girls on his good list in El Segundo, which most of you are on, all of you are on it, don't know. So we invite the entire community to come out and join us on Main Street on Sunday, December 9, to 1:00 PM to show Santa what a wonderful community we are. Those wonderful softball players will be following Councilmember Penmetall in the parade. So they will be right behind you, sir, making sure you're moving along and cheering you on, every single one of them. What a great community we are.
There won't be any running involved. I was told there'd be no running or math.
Watch out for balls coming your way. So thank you all so much, and we'll see you at the parade on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Okay, I believe we have a presentation. Yes, okay, we've got the Treasury Department coming up. Krista Binder and Dino for the Treasury Investment Portfolio Report. And then we're going to, then the K-9 Officer after that, Greg? Okay.
Technical difficulties.
No, she's bailing on us.
Krista Binder, City Treasurer. Tonight, we're going to present to you our portfolio report ending September 2018, but we're also going to give you kind of a year in review. So we're going to do something a little bit different, and then we're going to get into some technical stuff so we can kind of show you how smart we are, right, Dino? No? Okay. So this is our investment portfolio as of September 30, showing all of the different components within the portfolio. The reserve portfolio, which is the longer-term portfolio, and then the liquidity piece, and I'm going to get a little bit more into how we manage liquidity on the next slide, and the different composition within that. And then it also shows you the weighted average maturity, the yield percentage, and then their percentage of the total market portfolio that we have. Okay, so now we're going to do some math. Anybody good at math on the dais? Okay. So, in our last Investment Advisory Committee, Councilmember Perstuck made a suggestion that we kind of demonstrate to you kind of how we've built sort of our overall cash management program and kind of the things we look at to make sure that the city's foundation is well-formulated. So we, this is a particular tool that we use to manage our liquidity. So if you look at this, we have primary liquidity. That's the, you know, we need money on hand to pay the city's obligations at a moment's notice. So what we do is that negative $4 million, that's the lowest month where our cash flow is, I want to say, inverted. So where the receipts that come in are much lower than the disbursements that we make. So we take that number, saying that's the lowest number possible impact we could have, and we want to set that aside. Now we go even further, and we multiply that number by three, so we're adding an additional 75% of that. So you get about $16 million is where we create this cushion, which is within the city's portfolio, to hedge our bets against any kind of things that could happen so that we are comfortable about playing, paying our bills. So when Dino and I every day manage the cash flow, we balance to that liquidity target. So then the next portion of that slide will show you where, this is an example of today, where our liquidity for today was $15.6 million. So we're, we have a deficit position within that liquidity target. So what do we do? We think about it. Do we need to do anything else? We watch it. You know, is this indicative of anything happening within the city's finances? You know, it's not. Everything's fine. It's great today. But it just teaches us to make sure that we're keeping on track with our targets. Now, this formula is a best practice from the, something that we've learned in our Government Investment Officers Association. So as we pick up these best practices and tools, we apply them to the portfolio. So just a little piece of education and some math. The next few slides are our demonstration to, once again, adhering to the investment policy and being in compliance with the types of investments we have and the percentages that we're allowed to invest in. And here again, we take that on a, we take that on a next level, even more diligent about diversification in our corporate securities to make sure that we're not impacting the portfolio within a single issuer. So we're not buying all of Wells Fargo, all of a particular Coca-Cola. We're spreading out the types of investments within industry, too. So we don't buy all pharmaceuticals. We don't buy all banking or financial services. So we want to make sure we're diversified. And then our commitment to continuing education. And so I know we have an up, we just hired a new employee, too. So she's not here with us today, but we'll introduce her at a later date. We also stole her from the Finance Department. Sorry, Joe. Latonya Fair. So she's our newest Deputy Treasurer I. She just started a week and a half ago. So she'll be attending the California Debt Investment Advisory Committee's conference in Riverside in January. Well, she'll be learning investment fundamentals. So that will be her commit, beginning commitment to continuing education. And this again is a demonstration of our asset diversification and the types of investments we're allowed to invest in. Again, the latter, you know, we want to make sure our investments are spread across appropriate investment maturities. And then this is a slide, and this, the next few slides after this, I believe my last presentation, we talked about the yield curve and how it's becoming flatter. Well, yesterday, between the two- and five-year end, it inverted. So the lower end is now a little, I mean, it's minuscule basis points, but you're going to see when Dino talks how the market and how the economy is kind of, we're starting to slow down. So you're seeing these indicators. This is another indicator. The blue line back in September is our portfolio earnings potential, and as the yield curve inverts, and you know, when we continue with our committed program of laddering out securities, we get closer to our return or our effective yield because everything's getting shorter. So short-term money and long-term money are now looking the same as far as an investment. That doesn't mean you stop investing longer term, because our program is to keep investment process going. But it does tell you kind of what's happening. Is the Fed going to continue to raise rates when all of these things are now coming at us? So there's a lot of chatter. If you go on Bloomberg or you'll hear about the Treasury yield curve and what it means. So we look at that kind of stuff. The next slide, this is sort of the yield curve over time, and so the top line is the latest line, and if you look towards the two-to-five-year end, you can see it's flat. It's actually a tiny bit inverted, but it, it's now flattening out. So something for us Treasury people to watch and also see where we can take advantage of opportunities if we think it might be going down. So things to watch. Now I'm going to hand off the presentation to Dino, and he's going to kind of give you an overview of what we've been doing over the last year and, and the activities that we've been performing.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. So here we're showing you the par value, which is like the face value of, you know, a million-dollar bond. The red is what we've had mature over the last few years, and then the blue is the purchases, the investments we've made. So you can see that we've been using all the education that we have to be more aggressive in building out our ladder and investing more of the portfolio, much more than what is coming due. And then you can see just activity-wise, the number of transactions. You know, this year we had about 63 or 65 transactions that were purchases. A lot of those were CDs, which we get a smaller investment of $245,000, but we get a much higher rate. So when you build up a couple of million dollars of those, sorry, it really helps quite a bit. So here's the interest income from the year. This is strictly just income received. So it varies a little bit between months and quarters because some of the bonds pay on a six-month, every six months. Some, some CDs pay monthly, some pay every, you know, semi-annual. So you see a big difference. But the thing I'd like to point out is if you look at the last two quarters of our fiscal year, where a lot of the activity started to pay off, the interest received and the yield have both increased quite a bit. And then comparing that to last year, you can see how much the interest income has gone up over, you know, the fourth quarter of last year, and that's due to the increased portion of the portfolio that's been invested and also the increase in rates. And I think if you look back at our other presentations, we would show you the yield curve and all the investments we made on a little dot graph that would show you, we were, you know, making good investment decisions that were paying more than the yield curve. So that's starting to show and starting to pay off for us. Just looking at some of the economic indicators from the Fed, you know, GDP's been pretty high this year, especially second and third quarter, but as Krista said, things are looking like they might be slowing down. They're projecting, projecting a slowdown next year and the year after, and that's part of why this yield curve is inverted this week. People are starting to look at this. Unemployment, of course, is still very low, which is great. That's been going strong, so that's not one of the issues. But inflation was starting to get a bit higher, but as they've raised rates to slow down inflation, you can see it started to take effect. But now the question is, do they still need to raise rates now that, you know, unemployment is still low and inflation is still in check? So the projections, you know, from the last meeting in September, you can see they did raise the rate up to the 2% to 2.25%, but they still had the same projections going forward. It'll be very interesting in our next presentation to see what happens later this month at the Fed meeting, if they raise rates and what the projections are going forward from there. And if anyone has any questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment. It's, it's great that we have such an incredible treasurer that does this for a full-time job as well for LaWaa, so thank you, and thank you, Dino. And what was the number? I'm just curious on the, the interest earned in 2018 relative to 2017?
So 2018 was about 1.2 million, and I think we were, let's see, probably about 800,000 the year before. I don't have the total, but just trying to do a quick addition of the quarterly amounts.
That's awesome. Great work. And reduced our risk, so just incredible job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Krista, that last slide you talked about, could you put that back up? The one just before Dino started?
Which one was that? The yield curve one?
You started, Dino, with the par values?
Oh, that, this one, yeah. Yield curve?
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Feel free to stick around.
Not even listening.
All right, now the presentation everyone's really been waiting for. Greg, do we have?
Yes, Ori is joining us.
Ori's joining us. Do you want, you want to tee this one up, Greg, please?
Well, at, at your last council meeting, we said goodbye to Leo. We do, we do have a new police, K-9 Officer and a new, and a new K-9 dog, and Lieutenant Lehman will, will speak to this in greater detail, but the K-9s do a great job for us. They really can do things to protect people, protect our officers, and actually make us a lot of money because we loan our K-9 out to certain task forces and with their asset forfeiture, the dogs more than pay for themselves, I believe. Lieutenant Lehman, you want to take it from there?
Sure. So, Mayor and City Councilmembers, thank you very much. As a former K-9 handler, I'm thrilled to introduce our newest K-9 team, Officer Jeff Rudolph and his partner Ori are El Segundo's newest K-9 team. Officer Rudolph started his career with the department in 1992 as a police service officer and was hired as a police officer in 2009. Prior to being selected as a K-9 handler, Jeff worked the Patrol Division and spent five years working with a Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force. Ori is a two-year-old Belgian Malinois that received his initial training and was purchased in Europe. Jeff and Ori spent six weeks in an extensive academy at Adlerhorst International in Riverside, very, very difficult school. Jeff and Ori will now join El Segundo's other K-9 team, Officer Levitt and his dog Roxy, patrolling the streets of El Segundo and helping keep El Segundo and South Bay residents safe. Obviously, very excited, great dog. She's young.
All right, now, the presentation everyone's really been waiting for. Greg, do we have? Ori's joining us. Do you want to tee this one up, Greg, please?
Well, at your last council meeting, we said goodbye to Leo. We do have a new police canine officer and a new canine dog. And Lieutenant Lehman will speak to this in greater detail. But the canines do a great job for us. They really can do things to protect people, protect our officers, and actually make us a lot of money because we loan our canine out to certain task forces. And with their asset forfeiture, the dogs more than pay for themselves, I believe. Lieutenant Lehman, you want to take it from there?
Sure. So, Mayor and City Council members, thank you very much. As a former canine handler, I'm thrilled to introduce our newest canine team, Officer Jeff Rudolph and his partner Ori, are El Segundo's newest canine team. Officer Rudolph started his career with the department in nineteen ninety-two as a police service officer and was hired as a police officer in two thousand and nine. Prior to being selected as a canine handler, Jeff worked the patrol division and spent five years working with a Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force. Ori is a two-year-old Belgian Malinois that received his initial training and was purchased in Europe. Jeff and Ori spent six weeks in an extensive academy at Adlerhorst International in Riverside, very, very difficult school. Jeff and Ori will now join El Segundo's other canine team, Officer Levitt and his dog Roxy, patrolling the streets of El Segundo and helping keep El Segundo and South Bay residents safe. Obviously, very excited, great dog. She's young, I'm sorry, he's young. And because of that, it's, we like to, we would like to have you present Ori with a bone, if possible, sir. Well, here's the thing. So, there's a lot of stimulus, especially with all the kids that were in here before. And Ori's young. So, if you wouldn't mind if we could take a picture and maybe hand me the bone back, and I'll give it to Ori.
I don't mind handing him the bone unless you're concerned it might get eaten or something.
No, I'm not overly concerned about that. Maybe, no, just kidding. Absolutely, come on down.
I think the mayor needs to show leadership. Chris, you're awfully quiet over there. I want the padded arm. They can smell fear, Drew.
I told you he was young.
You got all those fingers? Did you count them?
Ori's going to do a great job for us. He really is. I might need a bathroom break. All right, I think that concludes our presentations. New council member initiation right there. We decided to get to hand the, yeah, that's great. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Nicole.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Brand.
Present.
Mayor Potem, first up.
Here.
And Mayor Boiles.
Here, thank you, Tracy. All right, now's the time and place for public communications.
Mayor Boiles, members of the council. My name is Rod Spackman with Chevron. Although I'm here mostly to listen to the chief and his staff on the presentation a little later, I did want to make one brief announcement. I hadn't had a chance to even mention it to Greg before I got here tonight. It came in late. So, we've been working on some, supporting some additional funding for some program activities, part of which had already been earmarked to the city through a supplemental environmental project that we worked on. But frankly, we were concerned about the scale of that. And we've been working with our folks up north. And tonight, we got some confirmation that we're going to have another nine-hundred thousand dollars in purchasable emergency equipment in conjunction with that program. So, just want to give you that little heads up. We got a little bit of details to work through, but I got a little note just before I came over this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Rod, and thank you for those good news. And just to clarify, this is money to be used for fire department purchases, essentially capital equipment? I can't recall the specific.
There's some equipment purchases that Chevron will be funding on our behalf that will be bringing that, accepting that gift at your next council meeting. That consisted of re-equipping every single firefighter with turnout equipment and a pickup utility truck. In addition, the funds that Mr. Spackman's referring to tonight, we are going to use to purchase a replacement fire engine that we'd already budgeted for in this year's budget.
That's great. Excellent news. Thank you, Mr. Spackman. Appreciate that. Okay, any other public communications? I saw Chris Kegel.
Thank you. Chris Kegel, South Bay Workforce Investment Board, here to deliver your quarterly report. As you know, we help your citizens find work and your businesses find employees. I wanted to point out, since Chevron's here, you may not know, but they also support us. They make contributions every once in a while and support our youth programs. So, we're really grateful to them. And Marsha was here earlier. I wanted to also mention that she is also very supportive of us. We just applied for a grant last week, and she wrote a special support letter for us. So, we really appreciate your support as well. So, anytime you need anything from us or your residents, you can always look us up and give us a call. Let me just give my phone number for the citizens. It's three-one-zero-nine-seven-zero-seventy-seven-hundred. And again, my name is Chris Kegel, and I'll leave this with the clerk. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. You guys are doing great work over there. Thank you very much.
Evening again, Mayor and City Council members. I don't think I can follow that last one up very well, so. So, as you know, the police department's been tasked with keeping Candy Cane Lane safe for everybody this year. I just wanted to go through what our safety plan is for the event. We will be doing hard closures at Acacia and Center and California and Walnut. Each of these closures will consist of two ESPD personnel and vehicles. So, this is an actual hard closure. If someone was going to come in, we'd actually have to physically move one of the vehicles. We will also have a fifth person as a relief person and to handle incidents. So, if one of our staff needs to use a restroom, or if we just have an incident somewhere in the closure, we're going to have a fifth person to be able to deal with that. The residents that live on the eleven-hundred block of Acacia will have ingress access from Acacia and Center. And the residents that live on the twelve-hundred block of Acacia will have ingress access from Walnut and California. We'd like to have as little vehicle pedestrian conflict as possible. And we think instead of having people travel all the way through the closure, that's the quickest way for them to get to their homes. Non-resident vehicles will not be allowed in regardless of who is driving. This presents residents from driving other people's vehicles into the closure, which was an issue last year. People were having parties, and what they were doing was driving their brother's car in, walking out of the closure, and then doing it over and over with a bunch of cars. All people entering the closure, excuse me. All people entering the closure must provide a California driver's license showing they live in the closure, and the vehicle must be registered to them or to an address inside the closure. There are obviously exceptions. Nothing's exactly black and white on this. Some people's vehicles are registered to their business or PO box or something, but we'll be checking that. The idea is, we want to make sure that residents are able to get to their homes, but nobody else. This information has been disseminated to the affected residents via door hanger flyer, and we will also be pushing out the information through our social media outlets this week. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Lieutenant Lehman. Real quick, I just want to commend you and Chief Whalen and the residents on that block, twelve-hundred block, eleven-hundred block. Not everyone's totally happy with the outcome, but I think this is a great first step this year to see how things go with the closures. And I love that we're getting ahead of it from a communication standpoint. And I just want to thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, any other count? Looks like that's, oh, yeah, sorry, Jeff. Gosh, yeah, Jeff, finally, you guys are here, El Segundo in-line hockey. Just kidding. Good to see you.
You know, every once in a while. So, as you guys know, this year was our twentieth anniversary of our league. And as a thank you to City Council, we wanted to present you guys with hats. I promise this one won't bite at you or make you jump.
Thanks, Jeff.
But also, as part of this year, one of the things that we did earlier this year, we changed up our jerseys to be a bit more representative of El Segundo. And this year in particular, or this season in particular, we put, I want to show everybody here real quick. So, we have the East Bay, El Segundo, our twenty-year anniversary, everything on there. And so, we've got a few things there that are going on. But as far as events in particular, I wanted to thank everybody on behalf of our league for your support. We had about two-hundred people there, which was amazing considering it's our first event ever. So, thank you, guys, very much. We very much appreciate everything you guys have done. I wish I would have had more time to do a presentation. We had some, I was able to uncover some amazing pictures of the actual dedication of the rink twenty years ago with the city council back then. So, when we go to redo the rink next year, hopefully, we can get you guys all down there, and we'll take an updated photo. We actually had seven of nine presidents at the event, which was just absolutely amazing. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys, everybody in the community for your support.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for your leadership. I just want to say thank you to the city because I remember when my kids were playing, dragging those little foam boards on Richmond.
I have pictures. I have pictures of Eagles Nest, people playing at Eagles Nest. I still don't understand. I'd hate to be the team going uphill like this, but, I mean, Eagles Nest and over at Richmond. So, amazing pictures.
Perfect example of the city adapting to the constituents' needs and building that great rink and maintaining it. So, thanks for being here, Jeff. Appreciate it. It looks like that concludes public comments. Any council comments?
I'd just like to draw attention, SB WIB. Although their one-stops are not located in the city of El Segundo, they are in surrounding communities. So, if people have partnerships or interests in going to El Camino or things like that, SB WIB has a number of assets for people to further their lives and education.
Yeah, thank you. And Chris, I know they have a program, I don't think Chris is here still, but they have a program for veterans. It's pretty unique. Or people exiting the military where the last six months of their enlistment, or what do you call it, you officer types? The last six months of your, whatever it's called.
Fighting. We called it fighting, Drew.
We call it something different than Navy, sailing, maybe. I don't know. But anyway, that last six months, they'll actually place military, active military folks in employers and pay for that six months, if I'm not mistaken. So, if you're interested, definitely contact us, South Bay WIB. Thank you for that, Councilman Pimentel. All right, let's see. We are going to defer Greg on number one. But before we do that, let's see. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, five-zero. Okay, unfinished business. We're going to defer this to January, correct? Okay. So, on January, we'll get a report on the rising CalPERS costs and long-term liabilities, what we've done about it as a city, and what we will continue to do. So, we'll move right on to consent agenda. Are there any polls from the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five-zero. Okay, new business. Nine, consideration of possible action to receive and file. Do we want to go ten before nine?
Yeah, we want to do ten before nine.
Thanks, Greg. Sorry. Item ten, consideration of possible action to receive and file a Fire Department Environmental Safety Division overview report. And Chief Donovan is here to present on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Fire Department has five divisions at Fire Administration, Suppression, which is the traditional firefighting, EMS, paramedics, our Fire Prevention Bureau, and the fifth is the Environmental Safety Division. And that fifth one is probably the least understood and without a doubt, the most important as it relates to community safety and the work that we do. So, what we'd like to do is provide a brief overview to the Environmental Safety Division. We have, I have with me this evening to give the presentation, Victor Morales, who's the Environmental Safety Manager. He'll give you an overview, a thirty-thousand-foot view overview of the Environmental Safety Division. COOPA is the acronym that we use, what we do, what we don't do. And then, we're also going to walk you through the process using the September two thousand and eighteen event at Chevron, the FLARE event, the pre, during, and post actions that are taken as it relates to our community safety. We'll then talk about our ongoing goals as it relates to collaboration, communication, that ongoing great relationship that we do have with Chevron. And this will tie in to the next presentation, Barbara Voss. Chief Whalen and I, Barbara will be the lead on the communication and community notification aspect. So, that's a general overview. And I'm going to turn it over now to Victor Morales, who will give you a short presentation on COOPA.
Good night, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Victor Morales, and I am the Environmental Safety Division manager for the, is that better? Okay. I am the Environmental Safety Manager for the El Segundo Fire Department, and I will provide you with an overview of the Environmental Safety Division. The mission of the Environmental Safety Division is to protect public health, the community, and the environment. In order to do so, the El Segundo Fire Department COOPA is one of the eighty-three agencies that the State Environmental Protection Agency certifies as available for implementing these programs. And these programs are the Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Plan, the Underground Petroleum Storage Tank Program, the Above Ground Petroleum Storage Tank Program, the Hazardous Waste Generator Program, and the California Accidental Release Prevention Program. I will give you a brief overview of each of those programs. Every facility in California that has over state thresholds of hazardous materials have to implement Business Emergency Plan or Hazardous Material Business Emergency Plan. And this is in order to provide safety for first responders and to comply with Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Act. The COOPA is responsible for reviewing, approving, inspecting these facilities, and we do so in a routine basis. In addition to the Hazardous Materials Emergency Plan, we do handle the Underground Storage Tank Program, which is crucial to protect groundwater and aquifers in the jurisdictions that we manage. The Above Ground Petroleum Storage Tank Program is basically the same program, but we protect surface runoff waters from petroleum leaking tanks. And the Hazardous Waste Generator Program is another program in which we do inspect routinely facilities that generate hazardous waste to make sure that they manage that hazardous waste properly, that they do not dispose illegally or not in conformance with the state requirements. The last of the programs is the California Accidental Release Prevention Program. This program is a special category, if you want to call it that way. It's for facilities that have large amounts of hazardous substances as well as extreme toxics in their facilities. Consequently, the regulatory oversight of these facilities is increased and is required by the state. And the COOPA Division has that task. In October, on October two thousand and eighteen, the governor approved a new tier for accidental release prevention, is known as Program Four, and it applies to refineries. It is an increased oversight and regulation that is applied to this type of facilities. And it is aimed to reduce accidents and releases from the refineries. It was approved on October two thousand and eighteen. It will be fully implemented by two thousand and twenty-one. In addition to the regulatory side, we do also emergency response. So, whenever there is a release of hazardous materials, it's time for me and my staff to suit up and respond to those emergencies and provide support to the suppression section within the Fire Department. And we do train and test and respond to those. The way we do it is through prevention, mitigation, and abatement. Prevention component includes inspection and document overview, response plans, plan check, and additional administrative tasks. Mitigation is through collaboration. We do seek collaboration from the different businesses in order to provide us with the information and the tools that we need to better prepare in case of hazardous materials released. And mitigation, we do respond actively to the site. And we make sure that any materials are properly cleaned up, any notifications are properly made, and that the mitigation of the event is up to standard. There are certain roles that are not assigned to the COOPA. One of those is air emissions. Air emissions in air quality is without doubt very important, but it is outside of our jurisdiction. It is the South Coast Air Quality Management District's jurisdiction. So, any air quality advisories or any air quality issues is actually outside of the Environmental Safety Division role. We do not have ownership of those. safety division role. We do not have ownership of those. Likewise, we do not respond to any workers' safety or industrial accidents. Those are the purview of the Occupational Safety and Health Administration or the Department of Industrial Relations, and it is outside of our jurisdiction to respond to those. Groundwater contamination, if there is any cleanup associated to the groundwater, that would be a state water resource control board. They have jurisdiction on that. We do have a number of pipelines throughout the city, and in case of emergencies, the CUPA is not the agency that responds to those. It is the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Coastal waters, if there is any contamination on the water, that will be the Department of Fish and Wildlife or the Coast Guard, the one that take ownership and the emergency response role. I would like to show how we work whenever there is a hazardous materials release or an event involving hazardous materials, and how the CUPA acts and prepares for it. There are some actions that are prior to any event. There are actions that we take that are during the event, and post actions. How do we prepare for any emergencies that we can have? First, we do have a very strong inspection and enforcement program. We do inspect those facilities routinely as required by the state, and the state oversees the routine that timeframe by which we inspect those facilities. We do review any documentation provided to us, and we do either accept it or deny it if it is deemed not acceptable to the standard of the CUPA, and we send it back to the facility requiring additional information. And we do verify that there is employee training and that everybody at the facility involving hazardous materials or the handling of hazardous materials needs to be appropriately trained. In the case of Chevron, the facility was inspected in 2017. The documentation was up to code, and all their employees were properly trained. During the flare event, the CUPA, the environmental safety division, did respond to the event. Before I actually go further, I would like to say that flaring is actually a safety function. It's not a hazardous materials release. It is meant to be a safety function for over-pressurized units that need to burn excess fuel, thus reducing the hazards associated to the amount of hazardous fuels that they have at the unit. The CUPA did respond to the emergency and worked with the command staff. We did verify that there was no explosion. There was no liquid release, or there was no malfunctioning on the unit that was flaring at the time. We did verify also that the flaring event was being proceeded properly, and there was a steam injected into the flaring to knock out emissions. We did notify the appropriate agency, in this case, Air Quality Management District. In addition to that, the CUPA did work with Chevron to do air monitoring. We did place strategic locations throughout the city to conduct air monitoring for toxic air pollutants. We were fortunate, there was no readings that were obtained. And the CUPA, of course, prepared an after-action incident report. The post-event, obviously, we do have to tackle the flaring. It's not, even though it's a safety measure, it's not the way it should be operating the unit. So, we did have meetings with Chevron. Actually, we had two meetings with Chevron and requested whenever they finished their incident investigation, a copy to the CUPA. We did review their emergency response plan and verified that the steps that they were taking were appropriate to the event. We did revise any applicable regulations to make sure that the flaring event was being conducted in a manner that was consistent with the current regulations. And in the future, we will make recommendations for these events not to happen, and we will look for opportunities of improvement. The goals of the CUPA are to improve the safety elements of the operation in order to protect the community. Also, CALAR Program Four will require a more day-to-day operation involvement with and collaboration between the CUPA and Chevron, and we will strengthen our community notifications for future events such as this. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to...
Thank you, Mr. Morales. I got a couple of questions. I'm not sure about the rest of the council. One is, you stated that AQMD is responsible for air monitoring, not CUPA, but we did monitor. Was that at a request of the AQMD? Why were we...
That was an additional step to verify that no community members were being exposed to toxics.
So, it wasn't required, but that was...
It was not required, no.
Okay, thank you. And then, you mentioned that part of the post-mortem was to look at any gaps in emergency response.
That is correct. Yes, we will look for opportunities.
Do you have some findings on what those gaps were?
Not at the moment. We have not received the final incident investigation. Once we receive and we go through the incident investigation, we will find what can be fixed in order to speed up the notification.
Okay. Because I know that there were some gaps on our end, right? We talked about the notification process and how it took us some time to get the word out to the residents. Is that what we're looking at, or is it both sides? What Chevron could do differently in the future, and also what the city could do?
Well, there is an upcoming regulation, which is Assembly Bill 1646, in which refinery notification will be another regulation that they will need to meet, and that is coming down the pipe. So, at the moment, there is a schedule that will have to be in place by next year, I do believe, and it requires refineries to notify the community of any emissions that go out of their facility.
Oh, is that Marasucci's bill?
That is correct.
Okay. Greg, anything to add on that?
No, I think what Mr. Morales is responding to is an analysis of the response by safety personnel and by Chevron to the actual potential hazard. And what you're referring to is how can we improve on the notification of a potential hazard or the thought that there may be a hazard, and we're going to speak to that in the next presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Morales before he leaves the podium?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
So, you called Barbara Voss?
Yeah. And is this still item 10, or are we moving on to nine? Greg?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. Consideration of possible action to receive and file a report of emergency communications protocol. And joining the podium is Deputy City Manager Barbara Voss.
So, I'll queue this up while we get the presentation ready. In response to the events in the fall, over the fall at Chevron, and really an ongoing conversation that I think the mayor and council have been having with city staff, we've really been trying to focus on what we can do to better communicate with our community, particularly in emergency situations or in situations where the community feels there may be an emergency, but they just need the information about what is actually going on. So, council, probably about a month and a half ago, asked us to come back, look into this issue further, come back with some recommendations. And I think this is probably going to be an ongoing...
Yes.
...process, but the two chiefs, myself, Barbara Voss, Randy Collins, our emergency services coordinator, have been meeting. What Barbara is going to speak to tonight is our initial take on what we can do better, what our plans are, and certain steps that we can take to more quickly and more completely communicate with our community.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So, I just wanted to bring us back to the July budget session when I was first asked to present a communications plan. And I presented this slide where I talked about all of the different communications platforms or channels, way to get the word out to all of these various audiences. And so, this really ties in with this evening's presentation that we're really talking about public safety and emergency management, so that one element of the overall communications program that will be developed. So, the October 2nd meeting, we were asked to, as Greg mentioned, look at how we're notifying the public in the event of an emergency. And so, I worked with Chief Wayland, Chief Donovan, Randy, and Greg to come up with, kind of go through what the current protocol is, and identify any areas of improvement, and sort of spell things out a little bit more to make it more clear for everybody involved. So, the strategic plan, I just wanted to start with going back to the strategic plan, the goal, support community safety and preparedness, and the objective there. So, we really wanted to improve internal and external emergency communications procedures to ensure the city council, city manager, everybody who needs to know, department heads, and the public are notified of significant events quickly. In the age that we're in with social media, we find that things get out quickly to the public. Somebody sees steam or smoke, or a police car, or something that causes them to think what's going on. They get on social media, and it's out, and people are speculating and trying to give an answer to something that they don't quite know they'll have the information to answer yet. So, we want to be on the leading edge. We want to be ahead of that to notify the public when a significant event occurs, to make sure that the information that is received by the public is accurate. So, we started with what is a significant event. And with the help of Chief Donovan, Chief Wayland, and Randy Collins, we divided the significant events into two different categories, type one and type two. Type one is imminent threat or protective action required. So, this is the more serious of the two. Hazardous material spill, significant fire, credible bomb threat, down the list. So, these are things that require immediate action, and public safety is at risk. Type two, less severe than type one, although it does cause concern, potential for public concern and/or disruption to routine activities. That could be a road closure, a traffic collision that causes traffic to be diverted or stopped, inconveniences, officer-involved shooting, unscheduled water outages, things that would cause people to feel concerned. Their safety might not be threatened, but they want to know what's going on, and they need to know what's going on. So, once we defined those two categories, we went through all of the different communications channels that could be used to notify the public. And the first is a holding statement. A holding statement is used when the public safety officer is responding to an incident, and they cannot provide an accurate report, reliable information on what's going on at that moment. So, the holding statement would be pre-prepared, be ready to go. There would be several different categories of holding statements to try to align with the things that we think could happen. And the holding statement would say something as simple as we're aware of this incident and we're responding, to avoid any question of, you know, is anyone doing anything? What's happening? What's going on? So, to kind of get that initial communication out quickly so that people are aware that the right people are working on this, and that we'll get you more information as soon as we have it. NICSOL, most of you probably know what NICSOL is, but for those who don't, it's a text alert system to notify anybody who registers for NICSOL what's going on. Reverse 911 is a voicemail that goes out to landlines and registered cell phones to provide more detailed information in the form of a voicemail. Then, social media. We all know what social media is. Facebook and Twitter would be our two channels on social media. I just wanted to clarify, because we do have quite a few different channels, different Facebook pages, different Twitter accounts that represent the city. We'll be using the city of El Segundo's Facebook page, the El Segundo Police Department, and El Segundo Fire Department. And then, Twitter is El Segundo PD and El Segundo Fire. So, those are the locations where we'll be posting information on social media. Website homepage, that can be used just to post information that went out on NICSOL, similar message, so that people, especially when we have our new website, will know that they can go to the homepage and get that information quickly. The website dedicated page is a little bit different, and it is a page that you have prepared that isn't visible during your regular daily website use, but that you can activate. And I know that our new website will have this capability where you can just activate a page that pops up that's all about emergency, and that will have the message and more detail about what to do, who to call, and information about the incident. So, that would be a more serious type one type of incident.
Is that like a landing page that would...
Yeah.
Okay. So, the first thing they would see is that page?
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Exactly. Press statement, depending on what the incident is, we may want to be more proactive with issuing a press statement. If there was media interest in the event, and we wanted to get out more details, we could issue a press statement and distribute that to various media channels. Press release, similar, but more detailed. The press statement is just a quick statement, and the release has the full story, more like what you would see in an article. And then, media interviews is having, you know, someone ready to speak to the media reporters, radio, who are onsite. Okay, so, the notification process. So, we divide it up into type one and type two, because obviously, the notification is a bit different in either case. Step one, the communications lead will always be the incident commander. And the incident commander would be public works, the police, or fire commander, who's working on this particular incident. The first step is to notify city council, city manager, executive team, and emergency coordinator. The secondary communication support is, say, the incident commander can't necessarily post to NICSOL, can't get something out on Facebook, then I would step in as the backup, secondary support, to get that message across to the right channels. And the channel, communication channel for that is email and text. And we do have now, with the exception of Councilmember Pimentel, we have all of your texts to email set up. And I'm working on that. So, you'll receive an email, and you'll also receive a text.
The future is yesterday, Barbara. The future is yesterday.
I tried. T-Mobile. Who knew? Okay.
Semaphore and Morse code.
Fine. So, step two. Step two is the holding statement. That's the thing that goes out quick, and that's pre-prepared. That's, we're working on it. We're aware of the incident. Again, that's the incident commander with the backup of the deputy city manager and the emergency coordinator. Randy and I will work together to make sure that we are supporting that incident commander in the event of an emergency. So, that's also going to be issued via text and email to city council. Reverse 911, depends on the incident, may be necessary, NICSOL, and then, social media channels that I mentioned earlier. Step three, so you've issued the holding statement. Step three is now you have reliable information. You're ready to give a little bit more detail. Again, incident commander and deputy city manager and emergency coordinator will work together. The channels there are the same, top three or four there. And then, in addition to that, the city's website will have a more detailed statement. And then, if needed, the dedicated page on the city website. So, it's either going to be a blurb on the homepage or pop up that dedicated page. Ongoing updates, same process. And then, if necessary, a press statement or press release. And then, finally, a statement indicating that the issue has been resolved. So, the type-two incident is the less extreme, less severe of the two. So, that's reflected in these steps, five steps instead of six. First step is the same, notify city council, city manager, executive team, and emergency coordinator. coordinator. In all cases, it's that incident commander is the lead, getting that information out to me or to Randy, and then making sure that the information is distributed via the appropriate channels. Holding statement, more detailed statement, ongoing updates, and incident resolved. So next steps, if at the direction of city council, you'd like us to develop and disseminate a citywide emergency communications policy and procedures memo, happy to work with the chiefs and Randy and Greg to fine-tune this, put a little bit more detail into it, and create the policy. We also need to determine training requirements, who needs to have public information training, how to speak to the press, you know, that's me, and what other training is required. And then, we also need to coordinate our access to, right now, only certain people have access to Nixle, only certain people have access to our various social media channels, reverse 911, very limited. So we need to really coordinate who is going to have access to those things, and that person needs to know, okay, I'm responsible for this if something happens, and understand the chain of command and the protocol, so that they are ready and able to post on these channels if necessary. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, and also the chiefs are here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I want to thank you and congratulate you on doing this. I know this is, you know, a lot of work, and it's really a big step forward for us, and I just really want to thank you for doing that. My only one comment is, I know you mentioned Facebook and...
Twitter.
Twitter. But I just want to make sure that we, in the policy, that we include language that says that we're always looking for the next best communication tool, especially for the younger demographic is not on Facebook or Twitter, they'll be on Instagram or Snapchat, and I want to make sure, or something new within the next six months.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we're encapsulating all demographics within the city, so that the communication go out effectively. But other than that, that was great.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, well done. And then, Barbara, will we be working with Randy Collins' department? And, because I know Randy's got, as part of his strategic plan, some scenarios, you know, practice essentially, desktop exercises? That'd be great if we could coordinate the two. You're probably already working on that, but...
Yep.
Okay.
We are. Definitely. He would be the lead in any kind of testing, and, you know, going through drills to make sure that this is all, everybody knows where they need to be and what they need to do.
Great. Thank you very much.
I just say, it just shows great leadership, and I just want to really thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
And is there a plan in place for community outreach? Are we spreading this information at Farmer's Market, or through our other email distributions to make sure that if we have someone's email address, and they're getting, say, Greg's newsletter, are they also one-click, easy access to sign up for Nixle reports, to sign up, to make sure that they're following our Facebook outlet, our Twitter outlet? I'm just trying to think that, it's great that we have the protocol, but...
Yeah.
We got to make sure that we're enlisting the audience.
Right. That's a very good point, and we could do a campaign, post something on Facebook, share with your friends, information's going to be posted here, something to announce that this is how we're going to be handling any kind of emergency communications.
Even if it was like a citywide little lockup? Because I know Parks and Rec has, there's lots of printed material that leaves the greater city...
Oh, yeah.
Departments. If it's just like, hey, for the next six months, we're going to put this little footer on everything.
Right.
So, it's just, it's there, it's uniform, and if somebody stands at the mic and says, you know, "I didn't know about this," well...
Right.
I feel like we've checked that box and done the best that we can do to make sure that information is readily available.
And you could, and the best thing to do is actually run some type of contest, so if you actually register your phone number, you're entered into some kind of contest, where we give them tickets to our play, or, I don't know, something.
Like riding the parade with you.
Riding the parade with me. But anything, something to trigger them to, a person, you know, maybe get onto the Easter, onto the field first in the Easter basket for the egg hunt.
We'll definitely work that into the plan.
Yeah, I mean, that is the important part, because we can develop a lot of great protocols about telling people things, but we have to also make sure we're training the city to hear things.
Right.
And that is, you know, if you're in the ham radio generation for disasters, and we tell them that they need to look on Nixle, you know, they're going to be looking for a rocket ship.
You want them to know what Nixle is, right?
Yeah, exactly. Precisely.
I think what I'm hearing is, we need a metric we don't already about engagement with the website and these other mediums. So, I mean, we'll know how many people are registered, signed up, and actively using it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Great.
And I think that can be built into the new website.
Yeah.
Easily.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? Thank you, Mrs. Boss.
Thank you.
So we'll take that as a direction, to develop this as a citywide policy memorandum and distribute it. It was a very useful exercise to go through this and to put things on paper, because you realize what you're not, what you're not aware of, or where the gaps are in the process.
It shows great partnership between the three departments, and it's really leadership,
and I just want to commend all three of them.
Good stuff. All right. Reports, city manager.
I don't have much, although I do want Meredith Pettit to come up and speak. Our beloved Holiday Tree lighting event is being threatened by rain, so I want to talk about the event and what our contingency plans are.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Nice to see everybody. 'Tis the season. So this week, this Thursday, is our Holiday Tree lighting, December 6th, starts at 3:00. The tree is supposed to be lit at 5:30, and the festivities go through 7:00. As Greg mentioned, we are closely watching the weather forecast, and we have Plan B in the works. We won't know until probably afternoon tomorrow if we'll be implementing any changes in the event. As you know, the weather changes quite frequently, and sometimes the forecasts don't always turn out the way they say. So, we'll be watching that closely, but definitely making notifications out to all of our participants, our vendors, and have them ready to take action one way or another. We may be moving activities inside, for instance, Santa and the toy giveaway, we're looking for an indoors location that we can quickly move to if needed. And we would hate to postpone the lighting of the tree, so we'll likely light the tree, whether there's festivities around that or not. But right now, full speed ahead, and we're hoping that the clouds move quickly over us tomorrow. Also, I want to take the opportunity to, want to take the opportunity to thank our sponsor, Mattel, for the event, and also mention Chevron. Chevron has come through with sweetening the pot, you probably saw on Facebook, the GoFundMe campaign for the community to raise some funds for lighting up Library Park this year. And thank everybody for donating to that. The community raised over $2,000, and that was led by Kate Osher and her family. And so she graciously took a lot of time out of her day, many days, to shop Home Depot for us, and donated a lot of Christmas lights, extension cords, timers, and our Parks guys have been hanging those up at Library Park. Chevron heard about it, and they called me up and said, hey, we want to join this effort also. So we will be using some of the funds donated from Chevron to help with the Library Park lighting, as well as enhancing some of the lights here at City Hall Plaza. So, thanks, everybody, for getting in the spirit, helping us enjoy this time of year, and we hope to see you out there on Thursday, but definitely keep your eyes and ears open if there's any changes in plans.
Great, thank you, Meredith. How will you get the word out, if it's, if we have to go to Plan B? What's the...
Sure. So, well, obviously, a lot of schoolchildren are participants, so we'll be letting all of the organizers of those singing groups know, first and foremost. But our Facebook page will definitely be posting there. Also, our email blast through our Civic Rec system, so anybody with a Rec Park card, or who has an account in Civic Rec, would get an email as well.
Great. And has that happened before? Have we had rain on? Surely we have, right? No?
Never. Wow.
Well, El Nino.
Not since I've been here, but we've been really, really lucky.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meredith, if everything goes okay, you're going to light at 5:30?
Right. 5:30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Meredith, the last thing I would add is, I spent the day with our friends from Guaymas. A lot of fun. Feel like I have five new friends. Looking forward to continuing to work with them. And Magic Johnson, I'd never met him before, he was extremely gracious, very down-to-earth, very, very free with his time, and really a friendly guy.
Awesome. Great to hear. Thank you, Greg. City attorney, Mark.
Sorry I missed that a bit. Nothing is evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, Tracy.
Consideration of possible action regarding council consensus to cancel the January 2nd, 2019 city council meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh.
Hold on. Who did what?
He moved, I seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Okay. Council, reports, city council members. Councilmember Pimentel.
We thanked and recognized a lot of people today, and that is not a small effort on the staff's part, to put those things together. And often, our approach to it doesn't make their lives any easier. So, Mesia Jennings, thank you so much for making all of this run pretty smoothly, when we recognized upwards of 95 people here today.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nickel, you want to read it?
Yeah, so I have an item under my name tonight. I'll pull it up and read it by title. It's, sorry, here we go. Consideration of possible action to direct staff to research the possibility of higher-density residential in the area east of Orabuddy and Washington Park. Fiscal impact, none with this action. A little backstory on this, I really wanted to bring up this conversation during the election time or campaign time in the spring, there's a lot of discussion, and when I rewatched some of your election discussions, it was, what are we doing about residences east of Pacific Coast Highway? And clearly, we've had that discussion, and it's a moot point, but that doesn't mean that, if that discussion is being had, then there must be people out there that are, what are we doing about the housing? You know, it's been discussed at EDAC, that the businesses coming here, saying, hey, you guys don't really have any executive housing. You don't really have anything for our employees. Your apartments are aging, there's few that have been remodeled, and honestly, there's a housing shortage. What are you doing about it? And I started thinking about it, looking into it, the history of our housing element, and how it's come to be what it is. And I guess, it helps that my profession is real estate, so, you know, year-built, the last condominium, now when I say condominium, I know a townhouse is technically, legally a condo, but the last condominium, where it's one residence above another, above another, year-built was 1984. Okay? The last apartment building, and this was a number that I was hoping staff would bring to me, but the last apartment building that was built in El Segundo, I believe, has a year-built effective date of 1979. You know, so, I was born in 80, I'm 38 years old, and it's crazy to think that this town has not seen the construction of a condominium complex or an apartment building since that time. And now, the concept is, the code must have allowed for it at some point, and there was a reason why they changed the code, because maybe there was too many apartments being built. So the code changed. And then, my thought is, on Main Street, we must have allowed parcels to be combined, so then a condo complex could be built. And it was changing the landscape of Main Street, so the code was changed. And since that time, all we have seen developed on our three parcels are townhouse complexes. And so looking at the map, as I do many times, of the City of El Segundo, if you look at the strip of land east of Washington Park, east of the DWP power lines, and west of Pacific Coast Highway, you have a strip of pretty high density already, townhouses and apartments. There's no single-family residences throughout that zone. Many of those properties are what they refer to, the city as legal non-conforming, meaning that if you tore it down, you could not rebuild it as it stands today. Now, if it burnt down in a natural disaster, that sort of thing, you are allowed to rebuild it as it stands today, but I guess, I wanted to take the temperature of this council to see, one, what is our desire to have staff spend some time looking into what tweaks were made to the code that kind of turned the spigot off for the construction of such buildings? And two, what does a, I don't know what's a dirty word, high density, what does density look like potentially in that zone? Because my background on the planning commission was, we always waited for developers to come to us with an idea, hey, let's do this, and then we reacted. And I think we have an opportunity to look at something and say, well, what do we want to see it look like potentially 10, 15, 20 years from now? Doesn't mean that it's going to happen tomorrow, but what are we looking at, and what do we want to see? And so, it's not an action that one councilperson can direct staff to do, but I just thought I'd open it up to a dialogue and get your thoughts on the matter.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. Thoughts from the dice?
I've got some. Back in the late 1970s, there was a group that formed here in town, and their name was We Are One. And their mission was to promote single-family dwellings, and to stop the construction of multiple-family dwellings, apartments, condominiums. In 1979, I was laid off from my job here by the local school district, and was out of the area for 14 years, coming back in 1993. And I saw a lot of multiple-family dwellings that weren't here when I left, so they're definitely, We Are One was, didn't seem to be in business anymore, and wasn't entirely successful in its goal. Certainly, residences for employees and others are short here. But personally, I'm not interested in exploring ways to increase density. I don't want to do that. I remain interested in talking about residential east of Pacific Coast Highway. I don't think we've really ever had that discussion. We seem to be afraid to. I'm not promoting it, but I'm interested in what the advantages and disadvantages are around it. But your proposal doesn't really speak to that. It's about this narrow band, and so that's some history on it that goes back 40 years or so, how we got to this point. And maybe a couple of us that were around here back then, not many.
Thank you, Dr. Bren. Other thoughts?
I think there are very few parts of the residential zone of the city that can support even medium-density locations, but I think it's important, when you talk to people out there, you know, when their children want to come back to El Segundo after they leave or graduate from high school, there is not a pathway for people and new families and young families to enter this community. You know, there just fundamentally is a shortage of housing that is attainable for those people to do it. So I know that it's easy to look at little league numbers and school enrollment numbers, and think that we have this perfect font of young families, but the reality is, is we've got three generations and an awful lot of houses. And I think that it would be derelict of us to at least not look at the possibility of creating some spaces for people to enter. Now, that may not come to fruition, and I don't think that we're, any of us are talking about an apartment tower at the middle of Maple and Main Street, but I think that these spots that are along Pacific Coast Highway, that are segmented apart from single-family homes, are places that it's at least worth looking at the possibility.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I think there's some interesting trends out there. When I look at LA County and other parts of the country, there's definitely a trend towards innovating construction, because it's a very expensive process, there's 3D printing and other things that are a reality now. There's definitely a trend towards eliminating, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but there are cities and parts of LA City where they eliminate parking requirements altogether, because they think it actually encourages vehicle use, as opposed to using mass transit or shared vehicles, et cetera. And there's a trend towards smaller unit development, to your point, Chris, about not having options available. Millennials and younger, they aren't as interested in owning things, and if they are, they don't want as big of a footprint. And to your point, the entry, the price of admission is so expensive in places like El Segundo. So, I would just, I have more questions, I think, than thoughts or answers, like where are we at in occupancy right now? What's the demand like? I'm talking about for condos and apartment buildings. What are the rules for apartments and condos as it relates to density? What does density even mean? High density, medium density is the way we define it. Like, I have more questions than answers, similar to Scott. And I look around at some of the apartment buildings, and there's got to be a reason that some of these old apartment buildings haven't been reinvested in. I mean, surely they're cash cows, I would imagine. But there's got to be market demand for a better product, is what I'm thinking, and why hasn't been their development, that development in town? So what are the barriers? And we heard, we had a, we had an employer here that is now a $2 billion company, friend of mine founded, that started in Santa Monica, left Santa Monica to go to the City of LA, despite having to pay groceries... of LA despite having to pay grocery seat tax, and when they looked at El Segundo, I've said this before, it's been a while though, the one impediment was housing, and they wanted their residents to have close proximity of housing, that was very important to them. So if we're looking at landing a two-thousand-person entertainment or video game or technology company, you know, we're going to have some issues, and it's supply and demand, if you don't have enough housing, you're going to have an issue at some point. So, I agree, I think it should at least be looked at, I'm not suggesting that we want to change the culture and dynamic of our town, because it is rooted in this steep tradition of small-town feel, so I don't know how we balance that. Maybe Scott and Chris are on to something, that we should look at these areas that could be conducive, that are on the fringes. Let's see. I mean, I think the biggest risk for us, Dr. Brand, is we know that more than ninety-five percent of our tax base comes from commercial activity, either directly or indirectly, we get very little from residential property tax. So that's the issue. So can you make the argument that additional housing supports business, and without it, you're going to have a stranglehold on new business development? And/or that there's, there's some support, you know, the ancillary revenue coming from those additional people makes a difference, but certainly, on day one, we lose that commercial business license tax, that sales tax, that use tax, et cetera, so, what are your thoughts, Greg? Just in terms of maybe some of the questions, I don't know if you have them prepared for tonight, but...
No, I, I think it, what staff really wants direction on, I think here, is if, if this is a, an investigation that you want us to do, do you want, do you want staff to do that and, and come back with their thoughts to the city council? Do you want to refer it to the planning commission? So staff and the planning commission can work together with their thoughts of, it sounds like you, you want to better understand what, what would need to change with respect to development standards or other city policies? Do we have an idea of what is standing in the way of higher-density development right now? And what would the next steps be? What would a schedule look like? What would a cost be if we wanted to address some of those things?
Yeah, I was just thinking, theoretically, someone decided, we're going to build something on the west side of PCH, fifteen-story tower, whatever PCT is, twenty-story tower, with adequate parking, what would that look like? You know, I mean, we'd be talking about adding maybe two-hundred, three-hundred residents to the city of El Segundo? I mean, it's probably, it's not even really, um, it's
You scared me of fifteen stories, sorry, I stopped listening.
I know, but I'm just saying, theoretically, like, to Scott's point earlier about how developers come to us, and then we try and say, oh, can we make this work or not? Should we not think through some of these things? Do we want to consider something like that? Is that crazy? Would we ever, you know, so...
And I think there's, there's, part of this is probably an education approach also. What, what does twenty units per acre actually look like versus fifty units per acre versus a hundred? And there's some very good visual examples that, that staff can, can use to have this conversation with the, the planning commission and the city council.
How much effort would this require? Because I know our work plan is set based on our strategic plan for the year, so we'd be scrapping another project potentially, right?
Um, we would be delaying some other projects by doing this. Um, you do have the option of having this conversation in June, that's six months away, and prioritizing it against everything else that we're going to hope to accomplish next year. I think we could probably take a, a, more of a blended approach, which is looking at what we believe the barriers are, developing some of the information. Um, I think you probably do want to refer this to the planning commission to, to gather their, the benefits from, from their input? And then staff can report back after we've worked with the planning commission on, sort of what we've identified in that preliminary phase, and, and what a, you know, what an approach might look like to amend the general plan, do CQ, um, what those costs would look like. The other thing you need to think about is, do you want to take on just this issue? You know, I've always encouraged council to look at, do we want to update the entire general plan and roll this in to that effort, and what would, what would
I think we said no to that, because of the dollars associated with that, right? This go-around, last go-around, but
But I think this
Even like, the composition, I mean, I'd be interested to know, like, why aren't there smaller studio apartments, for example? Knowing that the price point, the, again, that, I mean, what's the two, what's the one-bedroom right now, Scott?
To rent?
Yeah.
In town? Thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred bucks?
I think it's more than that. My son rents a tiny little cracker box for fourteen hundred on Imperial, so, tiny studio. So, I'm just wondering why there hasn't been more development of those kind of options for people as well.
And why there isn't reinvestment in, in existing structures?
Well, it's supply and demand. When the demand outweighs the supply, if you're a landlord, what incentive do you have to do anything other than just collect applications? You have ten applications for every open door.
Well, then addition, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, this is a, you know, it's a complicated subject, and there's a lot of things to look at, but to answer your specific question, Mayor, is, our code is, has density requirements, right? It says, you can have a, a unit, a dwelling unit, every sixteen hundred square foot per lot, if your lot is less than, you go to fifteen thousand square feet. So if you have a smaller lot, then you can have a certain density, which is sixteen hundred square foot per, per unit. If you have a bigger lot, then you can have a single-family unit, if you have more than, if you have twenty-four hundred square foot per lot, per unit.
Do you know what year that was put in? Do you know what year that was put into place?
Um, I would imagine it was done in nineteen ninety-two.
That was, that's the minimum, Sam, or something.
That, that is the requirement.
Yeah, so his point is that it's counterintuitive. The larger your lot, the more land area you have to have per unit as opposed to the smaller lots.
And so, those dwelling unit requirements are true for if you have a, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom units. And similarly, the parking requirements, each dwelling unit is required to have two parking spaces, and the guest spaces are based on the, it's variable, based on the number of units you have as a total. What I'm getting at is, those are the set rules. So if you have those set rules, and it doesn't ma, if the, the rules are the same, if you build a one-bedroom unit as opposed to a three-bedroom unit, you're going to build three-bedroom units.
That's why we have townhouses being built.
Yeah, right.
And we've only seen townhouses built since then.
Interesting, okay, good to know.
So, some of the, some of the other cities uses a, a variable approach, where if you have, if you build a three-bedroom unit, the requirements are, let's say, one per sixteen hundred square foot per unit, the parking spaces are such. If you build a two-bedroom or one-bedroom, then the requirements get less, meaning you can build a two-bedroom unit at twelve hundred square foot per unit, or eight hundred square foot per unit for, for a studio or a one-bedroom. We don't have that. We have a set requirement, and it's, it's, it's not, um, it's not difficult to see why people build what they build.
And I've been told that part of the rationale was that there was this feeling that we didn't want large complexes that took up like a whole block, that, that development that was more fine-grained, that were narrower frontage, that felt more neighborhood-y, were really more what we wanted as opposed to a large sort of Playa Vista complex. And this absolutely is an area that, that the council, that local government has the ability to address, zoning and land use. And you five folks with the input of, of staff and the planning commission get to decide what we want our city to look like in the future. Of course, supply and demand factors into this, and the demand is very high right now, but the council absolutely can change the development standards and, and encourage or remove some of the barriers to higher-density development. You need to decide with the community input and with the planning commission's input if that's what you want the future of this city to look like.
Thank you. Chris, did you have thought? Looked like you were about to say something.
I think just board, and I think the city manager touched on it indirectly there, that some of the same bills that we found very concerning at the state level from the last assembly, and an assembly with a very different composition are going, or are likely to be reintroduced with a far higher likelihood of success. Now, whether a former mayor as governor will embrace sort of invasive land use policy from the state, I mean, that's an, an open question, but I think it would behoove us to be on the right side of exploring innovative solutions if all of a sudden that became a criteria of who's open to housing and who isn't at the state level, when, when, when they start coming down and trying to, to put the fickle finger of fate on us.
Yeah, I concur. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, the nuts and bolts is there are, when you look at the map in El Segundo, something as simple as, if you're pulling onto Main Street off of Imperial, you're at the stoplight on Little Imperial, you have the seven-eleven complex to the west, and you have Lucky's Donuts and like the shoe repair place on, on the left, right, to the east. Right next to both of those are three-story-tall condo, like an apartment building on the west side and a large condo complex on the east side. And you look at that corner parcel, and right behind the corner parcel where Lucky's Donuts is, you have the car wash parcel, again, towering over the car wash is a condo complex. And so, for us as a city, if we are going to truly try to forecast or look into the future as to where would any higher density, if the state was to shove something down our throat, where do we want it to go? That's where I think we, as a staff, should look at and identify, okay, well, here are the areas that we might be
Open.
amenable to do mixed use, where it's commercial on the ground level and apartments above. You know, where it's so, the residents of our city aren't like, whoa, density is being shoved down our throat, and it's going to be dropped in on random R3 lots throughout town, I would rather get ahead of it and say, hey, this is where we'd like to see this happen, and it, as I thought the We Are One, that's genius, you know, because it, we do not want to lose our identity as a primarily R1 residential, you know, land area, so, that's, that's my goal of this, but I understand if, I don't think we should prioritize this on top of other things that we have, I think we can discuss it in June, um, but I would rather us get ahead of it rather than just react to an application that comes to, you know, the planning department, and then comes to us asking for a variance or something.
Yeah, I mean
I agree.
How much effort would this take to have the planning commission at least start the process with staff? Because by the time it came to us, it would be May or June anyway, probably at this point, right?
I'm speaking for Sam. Are, are you comfortable working with the planning commission and bringing something back to council four or five months from now?
I mean, and, and I think part of that, to Chris's point, I mean, we ought to be looking at what, what has been proposed. There's been like, how many, Mark, last year alone? There were like five or six housing bills that were at various stages? I mean, Wieners was the most ominous, I think, for all of us, but there were so many housing bills, there will certainly be more, as this is a major crisis for the state of California, LA specifically.
I'd estimate there were about eight housing bills in two thousand seventeen, and at least another half a dozen last year. In fact, we're, we're working to try to reconcile all of those different provisions, because they give different authority to Sacramento and the Housing and Community Development Department, and they're, well, pretty politely, they're, they're, they're kind of a mess as far as how they all fit together, but, yeah, the issue's not going away, and we're assuming that come two thousand nineteen session, state legislature will be busy working on housing issues again.
So, Greg, how do you feel about asking staff to ask the planning commission to start the process?
Yeah.
If we all agree on that, I'm just saying, if that's even
Um, we can move forward with, with establishing sort of a, a framework of, of what a process could look like, what it would cost, a schedule, and further defining what we believe and what the planning commission believes would, would need to be addressed in order to, what we're really talking about, I think, is, is what would it take to get people to decide to recycle, redevelop their properties from where they currently stand, whether that's commercial or residential development? And it's, it's likely going to involve looking at the density per lot, the building height, the parking standards, and those, those types of things.
Uh, just one quick thought, you know, Sam was interested, and so that, the one area, or the one little five-plex that sounds like it's nonconforming, that's got all these studios, tiny, like way less than, it's probably eight hundred square feet each. Yeah, those are all six-figure earners living in those five units. I mean, it, it's not that, we're talking about expensive housing, right? Those people all makes, I know all the people that live in that, in those units, so, it's not that smaller units necessarily mean we're bringing a lower socioeconomic, you know, resident into the city. It's that someone's si, single, they don't have money for a down payment on a home, I mean, let's be realistic, you have to have a minimum of, of, well, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a down payment in town right now, right? Twenty percent down, over a million dollars, jumbo mortgages, right? So, there's a big gap between wanting to live in town and have a nice home of your own, or a home, not necessarily a house, and then getting to that point where you can actually buy a single-family home.
So, in that example, you know, that, that five-unit property, under today's code, you might only be able to build three units.
Yeah.
And you'd have to figure out how to provide the parking garages for them, and maybe by the time you comply with the parking, you can only build two units. So that owner has to decide, am I getting more financial return on my five studios, or want to get more financial return on the, on a two-unit townhome project, and in this case, they, maybe they're doing just fine with the five studios financially.
And I mean, fast forward, I mean, when we start, when we talk city time, tens of years go by in the blink of an eye in a city, and when you look at some of those apartment buildings, that they were built in the late sixties, and those owners have no incentive whatsoever to remodel them, redevelop them, at some point, they're going to go, well, I can't rebuild it if I tear it down, so I'm just not going to. I'm going to leave it the way it is. And if we, as a city, just kind of say, well, we're not going to do anything about this, we know this is coming down the pipe at some point, but it's like the Smoky Hollow specific plan, right? We approve this, and people think miraculously, it's just all going to happen overnight, and it's like, well, no, what we're doing is we're giving the property owners the ability to do something if they so choose to. You know, so it's just, I just want to know where we stand on that, so we can have staff have an idea so we can get ahead of it. Or maybe it's even a council after us that ends up dealing with it, but if we don't look ahead, then we're not planning for our future.
So, what is
So, I'm in favor, yeah.
Okay, so, Dr. Brand, you in favor of at least looking at this with staff and sending it to the planning commission?
No, I'm opposed to it. I'm, I'm not interested in trying to find ways to increase density.
Okay, thank you.
So if it's, it's the council's desire, we will work with the planning commission, develop a, a feasibility analysis of what it would take to allow higher-density development, mixed-use development, recycling of properties, look at those development standards, come back. You may find that in order to incentivize recycling of properties, we have to lower the development standards or increase them, however you look at it, to an extent that you're not willing to live with that outcome, but it, I think it'd be an interesting exercise.
I would just say that what you said, except first seek, you know, seek first to understand, like, we, we're not looking to make any changes yet, we just want to understand what the drivers are for the local housing market essentially, right?
Right.
Thank you. Great, all right. Council member Brand.
Those of us here in El Segundo are not the only ones having issues with an airport. Uh, I've been hearing from people across the South Bay about the Hawthorne Airport, and while it might seem not, not important to us with our major-league challenges, there are changes in flight patterns that the FAA has permitted, and you have a much more active airport there now in Hawthorne with SpaceX work there, there's corporate jets screaming out of there much more often, and they're coming over parts of the South Bay that aren't used to having planes come over, and these are not quiet planes, these are pretty screechy planes. So, this is going to be introduced at the COG on December the tenth by Christian Horvath, a council member and, and member of the COG from Redondo Beach, and the idea is to form a subcommittee of the COG, which has many of them, to look into these issues and what could be done to mitigate them, and while it's not our problem, I hope we'll be supportive of our neighboring city's plight with respect to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mayor Proton Perstek.
Yeah, so I have number, item number thirteen under my name, consideration impossible to explore discussion of evaluating the current business license tax structure and recommendations for potential reform during the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, strategic planning and budgeting sessions. So, fiscal impact none. The reason why I wanted to bring this up is, to make any changes to our business license, we really have to go to the vote, to the voters, and so we really, if we want to make any changes, we have to plan ahead. So, what I've wanted to do is ask staff to look at our current business plan, our business license tax, and identify if there's any opportunities there, because I know it hasn't been changed since, like
It's been several decades.
Several decades.
Well, we added a CPI. I think like two thousand one, I think. We added a CPI.
Yeah, but it's been, I mean, we have things on there, like if we, you bring a circus to town, you get a tax, there's a certain tax. So, I think it's, there's times that we need, it's time to look at it and take the, the time to re, you know, take a holistic look at the, and if we'd like to. take a holistic look at the, and if we'd like to. Joe, if you want to make any comments to that?
Sure, it's, it's actually part of the, uh, work plan for eighteen nineteen that council identified. So it's a, a tier-two priority, um, under Rule Five. So staff will tackle this. Um, if it's something that council does want to move forward with, it would have to be timed with the next election.
Well, the, the next election's March twenty twenty. So that means that if this were going to go on that ballot, would have to be done by like early...
November.
Early December.
So a year, we have a year to look at it?
That's not that long, actually.
In council time?
Then there's, there's a couple, two or three months of bringing it to the council and reviewing it. And so, yeah, if you're going to do it, it, you know, and want to have it ready for that election, it's something that would need to get started this year.
So as a council, are you guys willing to take a look at it and to see if there's any opportunities there to modify, change it or not change it?
When, when do you expect to have that work, your group?
So we, we presented, um, a proposal to the council about a year ago on this, um, business license tax, UUT, and then the sales tax, and we moved forward with the sales tax option, uh, Measure C, which successfully passed. So we already kind of have a model set up. Uh, we would need to do a few more tweaks and then present that to council and obviously get your feedback and then incorporate the feedback from council. In order to put it on the ballot, we do need four council members to approve whatever the final, uh, proposal is.
So are you okay with moving forward with that?
I am.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this look at the entire licensing regime? Because I think that, that, I just want to be clear, we talk about circus things. And I know I get up here and beat up on fortune tellers and billiard clubs and all these other things that we regulate. Uh, so if those things are all in the offing of looking at this entire process, then, then I, I think it's, it's, it would be, again, irresponsible of us to not update our regime to the way the economy functions in the modern world.
Correct, and, and include obviously modern, uh, businesses which are not included in the code.
Currently is not included.
Correct.
Well, there's a catch-all.
Yeah.
There's a catch-all, but like there are delivery companies that...
Well, I mean, the catch-all was deliberate in that, and I think that was put in the early two thousands to capture things that would come about that aren't in the code. And because it can only get amended through a vote of the people, it provides some coverage for new types of businesses coming in. We can delete out, um, you know, the circuses and the, the fortune tellers and all that. We can, we can remove things from the code without a vote of the people. We can't add taxing entities or entities that we're gonna tax or increase the tax without a vote of the people. But we, we can, we can do cleanup things like that without a vote of the people.
I just think that if we're refreshing it, you know, let's, let's, let's refresh it.
Yeah.
This is one of those moments when we look at, Greg, you and your staff, and say, I'm sure you notice things in the code that we have not seen yet, that just stick out like a sore thumb. I believe those are the items that you bring them to us and say, hey, I think it's a good idea if we take this out or, hey, we've really noticed there's a lot of this type of business and we don't have it identified, we should. You know? I'm with you, Carol.
Okay, so...
And as I've mentioned a number of times, uh, El Segundo voters, uh, are willing to increase taxes that they don't have to pay. So this is wonderful.
So we're all in favor?
I think that's a five-oh. I mean, we didn't technically vote, but wow, I think that's worth a round of applause for Derek.
Yeah. Um, and anyway, um...
Can I, just, uh, just to dovetail a bit on that, I, I don't think that we're necessarily talking about raising anything. I think we're talking about restructuring or making sure that these, we have a model that works. So I don't, like, otherwise we could shut this whole thing down. I mean, I, I think...
I think, I think what I remember the findings was that we felt like relative to our peer group, we were undercharging, how, smaller.
Small ones, correct.
And I mean, small business, you don't want to penalize them. But I mean, it was, I mean, I've paid the license, it's like a hundred and thirty dollars, it's pretty. And then we were maybe overcharging some of our larger corporations relative to our peer group, right?
Correct.
And, um, yeah, I think, you know, everything gets passed on. So you raise business tax, when my prices go up in my business, the consumer pays it. It's all relative, so, it's like when you raise minimum wages, but that's another issue. All right, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the other aspect, just to remind council that, that staff had previously raised, is do we want to look at, discuss modifying the current sales tax credit on the business license tax?
That would be part of this discussion, right? Yes, okay. So there, there's many different facets to it. Great. So you think like, uh, when would we get a look at that, knowing that we only have a year to get it on the ballot?
Um, we can bring something as early as, um, late February, early March.
That's great. That would give us enough time, right? Good.
All right.
Thank you.
I just have one, a couple of things. Um, so I just wanted to let everyone know that Manhattan Beach is voting tonight on, um, if they're gonna change to PCH or keep it as a pullover. So I don't know if anyone's seen what the outcome is, so let's see what happens. We could, um, could be a trendsetter or an outlier. Yeah. Um, I do want to thank, uh, the police department and the Kiwanis for doing the Santa sleigh. And I was able to be an elf last night with Chief Whelan and it was such an amazing thing to see all the kids step on that sleigh and bring Christmas spirit to the, to the community. So thank you to Kiwanis and to the, uh, P O, police department. And, um, if anyone wants to attend any winter concerts, there's a lot of winter concerts going on at the high school and at all the schools. So if you want to have some enjoyment and listen to some concerts, look on the El Segundo Unified School District's website. They have a lot of, uh, concerts going on. Um, and, and also I think all those kids will be singing at the tree lighting hopefully on Thursday. That's it.
Thank you, Carol. Mayor Protem, all right, um, I'll, I will be on that Santa sleigh tomorrow night with my family, doing it again with Kiwanis. It's always a blast. Hopefully it's warm. It's been cold sometimes. Oh, it's gonna rain? Okay, where are our parkas?
Don't worry, don't worry, it's a, it's a rainout.
Uh, Monday night, we had incredible lighting of the menorah, second night of Hanukkah, that was great. And, uh, we had about, hmm, probably seventy-five people out there. It was a good turnout. And I want to congratulate Brian Oster for leading that effort for the last eleven years. So that was fun. Tree lighting Thursday night. Um, Thursday, I won't be here for the tree lighting, but I will be with Barbara Voss and is Al Kiyahi joining us? Awesome, Chairman of Economic Development. We are going to a Google Starburst Accelerator event as a sponsor and attempt to court some businesses down our way, some technology companies. So I'm really excited about that. And then Friday, we are also excited to host Mayor Garcetti of the City of L.A. He does a quarterly event with the L.A. convening of mayors, all eighty-eight mayors get together. And we've been asking to host for about a year now. So we're gonna host at Cross Campus, which is an incredible coworking space that, uh, is in Richard Lundquist's property, Continental Development Corporation on Apollo and Rosecrans. We're, we already have fifty people. We've got a world-class panel of Tim Harris, CEO of the Lakers, Van Espobodi, the principal of Starburst Accelerator, uh, Luke Robitaille, who needs no introduction, uh, Mike Mothner of W Promote, and one more. Anyway, we have a great panel. Anton Van Rudin of TechStyle, which is a billion-dollar company right here in El Segundo and innovating the way technology or apparel is made and sold and with a technology bent. So it's gonna be a world-class panel, really excited about that. And then I'll just also close with a plug. If you haven't gotten a tree yet, the Boy Scout lot is a great place to get your tree. Yes, you'll pay a little bit more, but it's the major fundraising event for the Boy Scouts. The trees are beautiful and I'll be delivering some tomorrow afternoon. So if you buy them tomorrow morning, I'll be delivering your tree tomorrow afternoon with my wife in the rain. And, uh, that's all I have. We're gonna go back to public, public communications.
Yeah, just, would you like to explain how you, uh, you carried the...
Oh, so one year, we, uh, my wife and I were delivering trees and they're like, oh, we need you to, to deliver the tree to Sheft. Sheft is a meal kit company in town on Curl Circle. And it was one of the like twenty-foot trees with a base like that big. And it's me and my five-foot-three wife. It was really fun. And, uh, she still does it with me to this day. But anyway, public communications, seeing none. Uh, we have no memorials this evening and we are adjourned. Thank you.